Shall we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to apply for the United States of America. In your report, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add Jessie or Jessica.
Yeah.
Jessie Bell to consent agenda for the position of kindergarten teacher at RMS. Beginning date please.
August 22.
August 22.
Okay, thank you Lisa. And again, we don't need an official motion on that, correct?
We're going to add it to the consent agenda because you're.
Yeah, we're going to vote on it, yes, right, okay. So we're ready for public comments then.
All right. Everybody should be able to see the public comment policy on the screen, whether you are here or remote. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make sure you're adhering to that policy. I would just ask first name, last name, and town of residence before making any public comment. And then also, the one other note would be if you are remote, please use the hand raise feature so that we could acknowledge you. If you are in person, feel free to actually raise your hand. All right, we do have one hand raised.
Okay, very good.
All right, it's Leslie, you should be able to speak at this point.
Hi, this is Leslie from Jaffrey, Leslie McLean from Jaffrey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to address facility sharing. Okay, when we schedule facility sharing, especially the gyms, we must make sure that we take into account scheduled cleaning and turnaround times. For example, if this gym is used all weekend for an event, it should be cleaned Friday night in anticipation of the event, we don't want to hand over a dirty gym, or for school on Monday morning. If then the gym is used by the event in the weekend and it needs to be ready for school on Monday morning, how is that second cleaning being done? Where is the time scheduled to get the gym ready for school? And who's fiscally responsible for this extra cleaning? Charlie said something a few meetings back that really bothered me. He said that if the facilities are going to be used regularly by the towns, then our budget needs to reflect that expense. This got me concerned because I believe the priority for scheduling usage and the waiving of fees has been incorrectly co-mingled. The idea that the towns don't pay to use the facility leads to muddling expenses in all budgets. It's important that the right expenses are in the right budget, whether town or school. For example, if the Boy Scouts or other, right, so for example, if the Boy Scouts are using the Pratt, say for the Pine Wood Derby on Saturday, and the town of Jaffrey is using the Pratt on Sunday, who's fiscally responsible for cleaning the school, but cleaning that Pratt before school starts? Not to mention heating, cooling, and electrical costs, which I know, but we haven't really decided how we're handling that. I think these types of expenses should be shared by the two groups, but it should be in their budget, not in the school budget. The school budget goes through apportionment and it's shared between the two towns. Ridge residents shouldn't be paying for the town of Jaffrey to use the Pratt, and no residents should be paying for the Boy Scouts to use the Pratt. Another example is the karate in Ridge. Who's responsible for the cost to clean the gym after they're done? It should be the rec department or the vendor. That needs to be in their budget, not in the school budget, to avoid Jaffrey residents paying for the Ridge rec department program. If the school uses Homestead or Community, those two fields, a portion of those expenses to maintain the fields should be in the school budget. Residents of Jaffrey and Ridge should share that expense, since it benefits all CMH athletes from both towns. And there's been talk about this MOU, that we can use an MOU to ease, that eases the scheduling burden with the towns, and that's fine. And other facilities that, other organizations that use the facilities frequently, but the financial burden still needs to be carefully figured out, so the right entity is incurring the right costs. We can waive certain costs, but we must be mindful when we do that. We're serving two different towns, and the budget's apportioned differently between those two towns. Absorbing costs into the school budget makes that cost shared between the two towns, despite the fact that the benefit may only be to one town.
Okay, thank you Leslie.
Thank you.
Just a note, we are going to discuss that later on.
Yes, okay, very good. Hello Kim, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
All right, that was everybody.
Okay, then with that, we're going to close public comments. We will have another public comment section at the end of the meeting. Okay, we don't have a student representative report tonight, so we're going to pass it to Ruben for the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we had a good end of the year. We had four, four evenings in a row, we had the high school graduation, then of course the weekend, and then we had the two elementary ceremonies afterwards on Monday and Tuesday, and then the middle school one on Wednesday. And so those all went well, I believe, and the end of the school year, as I said, went well, and the day for teachers and the end incumbent day also was very productive. So today was the first really day with just the SAU and the administration from the schools and the secretaries and so forth. We were unable to work in the SAU today. People from the SAU did work, we were able to do a lot remotely. I personally was here most of the day and was able to do the work that we needed to get done. We're in a process of certainly interviewing a lot of individuals and making some decisions that way. Also making sure that we're planning for this summertime so that we can be ready for the fall. And planning means that we're working on plans relative to facilities. Today, for instance, we toured around for a little bit Jaffrey Grade School, this was maybe three hours ago, to see the work that's being done there, to also imagine where we might want to make a few other changes while everything is kind of pulled up. And to make some improvements rather than putting back something old that may not, it may not be the best for the school and for the kids and for the teachers. So we're looking at that and doing some planning right now. Other plans that are going to be made for the summertime as it pertains to the beginning of school next year, and then of course, looking further beyond just the beginning of school, will begin tomorrow. And the next day, we have our first two days of our leadership retreat, the administrative retreat that we have. About 12 to 15 of us go, we're going to the Harris Center for two days. And tomorrow's focus is really looking at the year in review, looking at how the year went, what were the good things that we did, what were some things that maybe we would have liked to have seen some better improvement on? Well, largely it will be a celebration, we had a pretty good year this year. But we're also going to take a look at our multi-year plan and do an assessment so that we can go and have that conversation with the committee in early July, so that'll be the second week in July. And then the next day is taking that information, looking at, you know, everything in from a reflective standpoint, and then moving forward, what are we planning to do and what are the steps to get there through the summertime? We do know that there is a, definitely across the district, there's a continued effort on MTSSB, behavior and wellness, health and wellness that way, looking at restorative practices all the way through the system. So that will certainly be, I'm sure, a highlight of the work that we'll be doing this summer and into next year. There's some exciting work that's being done at all the schools. And so, and we will look at perhaps even a couple of different small pilots that we might do that would be of best practice to try to keep our entire school district moving forward in a very innovative way. And then on Thursday, we have the next meeting of the Route 202 Committee. We have a couple of people that we need to invite, others have heard about this and are now asking to be part of this. Really, the bulk of the evening is going to be planning how we can engage the entire communities, both communities, in some visioning and some planning for what could be done at that Route 202 site. We did walk that site during our last meeting, a few of us got some ticks on us. We took those off, that was good, but it was, it was a really nice environment walking there. There are some trails that are being used and on the property, but it's, there's a lot there. We certainly didn't walk the entire property, but there is, from the wetlands over the Jaffrey side of things to where it kind of flattens out over onto the Ridge side of things, there's, I think, a good deal of potential. And we still have yet to really have our forester go in there and do what he needs to do. And that's my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you Ruben, are there any questions for Ruben? No, okay, thank you Ruben. And with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, as amended, with the addition of Jessie Bell. Okay, if there is anybody. Thank you Charlie.
Second.
Thank you Christopher, thank you. Okay, any discussion? No, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And so that passes five to zero. All right. Thank you. Meeting minutes. So we have the meeting minutes for June 5, 2023, public, sorry, that's in the consent.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, it's highlighted, right?
Yes, yes. No, and we had talked at one point about moving them out, so don't mind me, sorry. And as always, thanks for keeping an eye on me. Okay, action items, the CTE bid award.
All right, so a while back, we put out an RFP for architectural engineering services for the, to develop a plan for the potential of CTE, their renovation, or new construction, or a combination thereof. And so the board has had conversations, it's presentations from the high school about, certainly we want to improve our construction trades facility, whether it be a renovation or a new construction, or, but also look at the possibility of adding some of these other programs that are forecasted to be areas where jobs are going to be plentiful in the future. And so culinary arts, cosmetology, and public safety are those areas. And so all of that was in the RFP, two firms responded, they're going to, you know, they, some of them have different prices for, one of them had different prices for renovation versus new construction. The other one, the prices were all pretty much the same for, for both, and doing the plans. Both of these firms are reputable, have worked on CTE projects in New Hampshire and other schools in New Hampshire as well. They utilize a lot of the same individuals, companies to help out with their planning and their designs and their follow-through. So what we did note was that there was a very large discrepancy in what was going to be paid out or would need to be paid out in the first phase of this, which is really the initial planning phase so that we can go forward and start to develop an application. We would want that information by the end of summertime, so the beginning of fall, so that we can start to look at how we want to craft messaging and also possibly, possibly, depending on how we want to do this, bond or something for the March vote. And then the difference between the two was about $65,000. One was the La Valley Bressinger Architects was about $125,000, and the Barker Architects and Ashley McGrath Architects was around $60,000 for that. Looking at most things being fairly similar, the group of John McCarthy, Sandy, myself, Tom Horn, who's a member of Ridge resident and a member of our 202 Committee, other individuals certainly weighed in and reviewed these as well. But these were the individuals that said, you know, let's, let's move forward with what seems to be the better option for us. Now Barker, just as a point of interest, Barker Architects and Ashley McGrath Architects, I believe those are, that's the group that's chosen to do this work over at the Mecenic School System for their CTE renovations. And then La Valley Bressinger, they have been chosen, I believe, for the Conval group. So we would be, if we were to agree to move forward with Barker Architects, we would, we would be using the same individuals as the Mecenic School District.
Does that cause a, like a problem with start time, or?
Nope, I don't think so, just, just kidding. I mean, out of the two, certainly two projects that, you know, these individuals have, the Conval one's going to be a lot larger project, and the Mecenic one's going to be a smaller project. So them having Mecenic and us is getting to be a lot more comparable to what the other group is doing over our Conval. Because we're actually proposing a fairly large shift.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so whereas Mecenic is looking to renovate what they currently have with their automotive and add, I think it's diesel.
And this amount of work, they should be able to comfortably integrate.
So I wrote, drafted up a motion that the board could use, should you choose, down there in bold.
Was there anything in the La Valley one that excited you, like, oh, I wish, is there, are they really comparable?
No, they, they, their proposals were very comparable, yeah.
The one thing I'd say is that they seem to be very professional. They had, you know, good people identified as their contractors, because some of this work will be done not by them, but by people they hire and supervise. And we felt that the, the cost of it was very favorable. And in part, we think that La Valley, which is, they're sort of the largest firm doing this, and they probably just gave us a high price with the idea that if we wanted it, we'd take it, and if not, no. No problem.
Yeah, and looking at this, this kind of bid summary comparison documents, the real money we're going to save, assuming we, you know, move on to the full design, is, you know, post this Phase 1 and the Phase 2, you know, La Valley's design fees are like 3% higher. So when you're spending a little money to spend like 3% more on it for a fee, I mean, that's going to dwarf this $60,000. Assuming, you know, anything over, any dollar you spend is going to be, you know, 3%, 3% more on Phase 2.
Right, yeah, 3% of potential millions.
Yeah, exactly, so that's like, that's going to be the real savings.
It is, yeah.
I was thinking for the other way around, it might be a consideration, I thought that maybe they were submitting a high and then going to make it up on the back end, but this is.
No, it's high, high all the way around.
High all the way around, Phase 1 and Phase 2, so it's kind of a no-brainer, my standpoint.
So didn't we just do an architecture business with the games or gates or something like that?
That's for athletic complex, like fields.
Okay, so that's limited to the athletic.
That's limited to the athletic fields and.
And it doesn't include the Route 202 site, I don't believe.
It does not, it's existing sites. I mean, you can go change order and have that, but that's, that's another conversation.
And the other thing about this is that we know we're starting late in the process. If we're, want to take a serious shot at doing this, this is when we need to act.
I would be open to making the proposal, are we ready for a motion? Okay, I move to award the CTE architectural engineering contract to Barker Architects and Ashley McGrath Architects, and to offer as a superintendent to enter into an agreement with this firm such that it does not exceed the costs outlined by the firm in this proposal.
Okay, thank you Lisa.
A second.
Kim, thank you for the second. Are there any further discussion? No, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay. Charlie, do you want to share all your reasons for voting no?
I didn't vote no.
Oh, I thought you did.
Sorry, I said aye.
Oh, you said aye.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So five to zero.
Five, five to zero. Charlie, my apologies, my.
That's okay.
Hearing aids must not be functioning.
Sometimes I mumble.
Well, okay, good, all right, so that passes five to zero. I thought you were throwing me a curveball there, so, thank you.
I'm going to check and see something.
Okay, so we're on to policy review. Lisa, would you like to lead us through that?
So this is the second reading, and we've looked at these before. The drug-free workplace ABD policy is a required policy, and we are accepting the New Hampshire School Board Association's legal language in that. BID, board member district officer compensation, second reading is asking for the edit to move the payment from December to the November 1 payroll. And KFR, use of school buildings, facilities procedure is extensive, and I hope people have looked closely at the language in it. And this is a, you know, no changes since we've brought it to the policy committee. But I do want to speak to Leslie's concerns and know that I'm going to be marking this particular meeting, Leslie, so that I can, when we have policy review for this again, we, I want to make sure that I hear your concerns at that point. What we're doing right now is creating a space to closely monitor, review, and understand how these are being used. When we spoke with the town, you know, both towns and the rec departments, their usage is so minimal that we needed something in place, but we're trying to, we are desperately trying to be fiscally responsible with what we have. So this is a step toward that, in that this will help us closely monitor what kind of use is there? What are, what are the gaps happening and where are communication difficulties happening? And so hopefully, this is a step in the right direction, but this is by no means the final step. We want to definitely look at this again in a year, I'm thinking by next spring. Look at this again and say, okay, we've had a year of this, what's happening with it? Is it successful? Speak with the, all the entities again, and try to make sure that, you know, we're staying in line with what the taxpayers want us to be, you know, both promoting and being responsible for.
All right, to address Leslie's concerns about who funds what, all right? Who funds the maintenance, who funds the cleanup and so forth? The KFR specifies that each town can have a memorandum of agreement with the school district to take care of the particular needs of that community. For example, for example, who, is there offsetting funding for the ballpark in Jaffrey versus Jaffrey's use of the Pratt and so forth? Those are things that can be negotiated in an agreement with Jaffrey. The same thing with Ridge, the karate class and so forth can be negotiated between the school district and the town. Otherwise, as my recollection, that all priority five and six uses have to come, have to be paid for or come before the board for a waiver. Now, that's my understanding, and, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I believe that's what the KFR says.
All right, thank you Charlie. Thank you Lisa, any other thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I just kind of seen this evolve, you know, since my, in a few meetings before, I've been on the school board and certainly appreciate the effort there, and I think, I appreciate Lisa's perspective that, you know, this may not be the final answer, but we need to make a step, a step forward. It may not be perfect, but I think it's, it's the best it can be right now with the information that we have, and to have the open mind to consider, you know, additional feedback. And I do like the idea of the MOU, because it gives us the flexibility of evaluating those things that, you know, Leslie mentioned in her comments, and coming to something that feels fair and is fair fiscally to both towns. I think the part that I don't think we on the board can control through policy is like, when things are getting cleaned and, and that, that's to me up to the, you know, the schools to manage, and I think they'll continue to do that, so I don't see, I don't think, that's something we address in policy, right?
Only to the extent that through an MOA, all right, or through the utility, use fees that we have scheduled, we have a scheduled use fees, all right, that that funding is available to facilities. Now, beyond that, you know, when it's done and all that stuff is, like you said, it's up to facilities.
And certainly Sandra, who's here with us tonight, thank you Sandra for being here. She certainly has a big job in front of her, given the staffing concerns and, and, you know, one of the things that I'm sure you'll be doing is communicating with the counterparts in the town governments, or especially in the rec departments, those who typically want to use these facilities, because the staffing, sure, the pressure will be there, and maybe we can get better cooperation from those organizations with their understanding that this is our situation.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve policies ADB, BID, and KFR.
Okay, thank you Lisa.
I'll start her.
And thank you Charlie. Is there any further discussion? Then all, please, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes five to zero, thank you Charlie. Making sure I didn't misinterpret it, all right. Very good. So we are on to board committee updates. And I guess I would ask that anybody who has a particular update to their committee that, you know, we haven't already covered, you know, that is an update since the last meeting, please, we share.
We just covered policy, but where can we meet tomorrow at 4:30?
We can go back into the SAU, correct? So at 4:30, we can meet in my office.
Okay, thank you.
The finance committee canceled this meeting for this month. We had no real agenda items, so.
Right, given so close to the end of the year.
Yeah.
The facilities committee met today, we had our last meeting with John McClair, and very good meeting. Leland from EEI was there, their superintendent for that project, as well as Steve Yorton. His last.
Horton.
Horton, Horton. And Steve and Leland went through the current status of the project. That is the HEAC project, the two grade schools are finishing up, a few details to be done there. We're right in the middle of the big part of the work at the high school. There's still some work at the middle school as well. But I think there are five or six units being lifted onto the high school today and tomorrow, or this, this week certainly.
The 29th, I think, is the other date, so it's today, we had some movement, and then I think it was taking off, correct?
Yeah, we were removing some.
Removing items today. Removing items today.
Twenty-ninth will be putting stuff back on the high school. The seventeenth of July will be doing the middle school. Get the units back on the middle school. So we're done with crane work until the twenty-ninth.
Okay. And uh, we spent quite a bit of time on this, this is obviously a very big purchase for the school district. We're upgrading all of our uh, buildings and making major upgrades. It's a big investment for the community and uh, between Steve Horton and the EEI, we feel like we've got people who are working hard to do a good job. And they've reminded us that uh, this is not like buying a single unit or something, this is, you know, multiple pieces in four different places and they all have to work and it's gonna be ongoing work over the next couple of years to make sure that the balancing is done right and that everything works to specs, or at least within a tolerable degree of specs, so. And we'll be, we're gonna have trainings that will be done for our facility staff and we'll probably wanna include other people. There's talk about getting Nick and, oh, I'm sorry, Juno involved because we want to uh, record those trainings so that we can look back at them, we have changes of personnel. And uh, we also wanna involve our teaching staff. And in order to do that, the plan is to speak with the teaching staff or to look for a time to speak with them at the start of the school year. Just advising them that we're counting on them to provide information, particularly as we meet more extreme temperatures, hopefully in the fall and the winter, we get some good examples of, you know, temperatures where uh, we, we put the system under stress and we get feedback. Uh, by the way, the facilities committee agenda is available online. Uh, there were hundred and five, there, there are a lot of items. This sheet here, I know it's a long distance off, but all the items in red are items that are scheduled to happen before June thirtieth, although John has warned us that construction being what it is, some of them may carry over into July. But there are multiple projects being worked on. We're, we're gonna keep Sandy busy. All right. Uh, anybody else with a committee update? No? Okay. Very good. It's summertime, so. It's time now for public comments too.
All right, um, I'm not gonna explain anything because uh, it's all the same people, nobody new has come in. We do have another comment online. And it's from Leslie, and you should be good to talk.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Leslie, we can.
Okay, Leslie, my name from Jaffrey, I appreciate what you said about what I raised before, that's great. I just would like to point out, um, especially since I didn't know Sandy was in the room, but it's great that she is. Last winter, there was a large problem keeping the Pratt clean. Um, salt, sand, and snow, and the activities director spent a lot of time cleaning the Pratt. So can facility, uh, is she empowered, and I know you don't answer me, but like, you talk with her, but is the facilities director empowered to say no to outside organizations such as the towns or the rec department? Um, which, because they add burden to our ability to clean the facilities for school use due to either uh, staffing, general staffing problems, or just time, that there's not time if they do an event, say on a Sunday afternoon, for us to have the school ready Monday morning during the winter, when that Sunday afternoon event could be dirty. So I just wanna point that out, that that has been an existing problem all last winter.
Okay, thank you, Leslie, again, for coming in with that. And we will, we will take it up. Thank you. Uh, anybody else, Nick?
Uh, no, we're good.
Okay, well then we're gonna move on to board matters. Lisa, did you have something you wanted to introduce?
Yes, um, so I would like to make a motion that we um, ask Ruben to take on all hiring duties for all staff until, yeah, fix it, Charlie. We wanna authorize Ruben to do the hiring um, through.
Professionals.
Of all staff.
Yeah, so you, you're, you're looking to give the superintendent hiring authority through um, the summertime.
Um, through our um, shall we end it on, I'm looking at this, um, August twenty-first? Through August twenty-first is our school, we have a school board meeting that day? So that's um, reasonable? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to authorize Ruben Duncan to uh, do full hiring. Have, have the authority for full hiring through August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Charlie. Is there any discussion? And I'd just like to ask, Ruben, is the twenty-first, is that far enough?
Well, uh, hopefully we can do the big job this summer, it's a couple of months, just about. Actually, two months, exactly, so I think it'll be good. And like you said, on the twenty-first, we can, we'll have a school board meeting, we can revisit it at that point if we have, say, a category, we, what we've done in the past is uh, we've chosen a category to maybe focus on a little bit longer if we need to.
Good. Okay, if there's no further discussion, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes five, zero. Future items, anybody have any future items that would like to bring up?
We have enough problems, I have enough problems dealing with the present.
Yeah, well, I'm with you there. We've got a lot, a lot on our plate, a lot's going on, so, good, a lot of good things, a lot of good things. So I think we just need one more motion to close out the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I second. That was quick.
Very good, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.